Session, we will turn it over to Sarah to get us started.
Let's just turn it off. Thank you, commissioners. Today's work session is with Heartland Health and we had some questions during our budget process and we have asked them to come back and sort of give us an update on some of those questions and some additional material. So Julie, I don't know if I'm turning it over to you. You can just come over here to the microphone and and speak from there. I can, I can get the copies, commissioners.
Yep, thank you. I promise I'm not the only one speaking today. In fact, I'll, I'll be saying perhaps the least. But thank, but thank you all for giving us the opportunity to come and kind of give what's happening with Heartland Community Health Center, particularly over the past year and what we have planned. Appreciate Sarah suggesting this and giving us the opportunity to come. In the audience, we have kind of a mix of people. So very briefly, Brad Kohler is our board president. Devin Kim is on our executive committee. Linda Shepherd is on our board and committee. Linda Thomas is on our executive committee. And then we have three staff here with us, Julie Branstrom. Julie actually is not looking as fatigued as I thought because we had a snake peat at our new building and she was the one responsible for almost all of it. Rachel Bradford is our chief operating officer and Dr. Molly Day is our chief of dentistry. I'm Julie Boden Schmidt. I'm the interim CEO. I've been here since the middle of April and we'll be here at least sometime in January, if not around February 1st and explain why in just a second. As you know, in my other life, I do consulting with a lot of community health centers and as you know, Heartland is a community health center federally qualified. And what that means is we get grant funds. We also get some enhanced reimbursement. And it is all because at the federal level, they believe that people have a right to good healthcare and recognize that for many, that's very difficult. And so I think what's wonderful about Lawrence is not every community is so fortunate as to have an FQHC in their community, providing the care that is needed. I'm going to make a few comments and start the summary. We certainly recognize this as a discussion and not just talking at. So any questions you have or interruptions you want to make, please, it's your floor. So what has happened over the last year? I came here, as I said, in April. In August of 2020, Heartland Community Health Center merged with Douglas Dental. It was really a pretty seamless merger. I had been in discussion actually with Julie Branstrom, who had been the executive director at the time, two years before saying it made so much sense to bring these two groups together. They did. It's been wonderful for Heartland. I think it's been wonderful for Douglas Dental. In January 2021, the acquisition of Panda Pediatrics was official. And I have to say that was not quite as smooth and it makes sense that it wasn't. Heartland was a mission-based, community-focused, not-for-profit organization. Panda was a physician-controlled, for-profit pediatric practice. And I think at first there was a question of can these cultures ever, not just meet, but merge? And the other day I happened to be in a meeting of the providers of pediatrics and family practice and watched them interact and problems solve together. And I honestly just kind of wanted to click my heels and say, it worked. It took a while and I think the pediatric practice has learned what it means to be part of an FQHC. Give you one example, we just placed a pediatric social worker in the pediatric practice. And now when a family comes in, they have their childcare for it, but it's clear the family is having challenges. We can do a warm handoff and say, there's somebody here who can help you now. Let me introduce you to her. And that would not have been available just because of the financial restraints before. So Panda had to make, the pediatric clinic had to make a lot of changes. Their medical record systems, policies, procedures, everything, of course, was different, but what's exciting is now I think everybody's seeing the benefits of it and, and not the downside of it. We have a, a new clinical site and I don't know that any of you were able to join us last night. But I want Julie Branstrom briefly to talk about what that means, not just for Heartland, but really for Lawrence. So Julie?
Hi, good afternoon. My name's Julie Branstrom. I'm the chief development officer for Heartland Community Health Center and, okay, sorry. And as Julie Boden Schmidt mentioned, I was the former executive director for Douglas County Dental Clinic for 15 plus years. So I am passionate about public health and access to those who struggle with finding access to healthcare in other places. When I joined Heartland as a result of, of the merger of our two organizations in August, I was in a different role than I'm in now, but changes led to me taking over a capital campaign and the building project. And it has been a privilege to be a part of that process in ensuring that what we are able to provide to our patients and to our staff is state-of-the-art. And it is. And if you know where Heartland began and where we're going, it is a huge upgrade. So our new facility has 36 primary care exam rooms. It has six behavioral health rooms that are embedded into the primary care pods. And then we have a dental wing with 14 dental treatment operatories. We have a lab. We have a pharmacy with a drive-through window that will be opening up in January of 2022. We have an amazing collaboration with Just Food and Harvesters to have a food pantry that we call the Care Cupboard. And when patients are there for an appointment, we always ask them about whether they are experiencing food insecurities and to be able to have that right there on site to meet that need, if it is a, a need, is really important. We're in a fantastic location, thanks to the Dobskis, with having that vision of being able to look across the street from their office and see that old Anderson Rentals building, knowing that it was going to be available and what a perfect location it would be to become the health center for our community. So this space, again, it's state-of-the-art. Community health centers are designed to be to, to sort of address that fragmentation that exists within healthcare by bringing all of these disciplines of primary and preventive healthcare needs under one roof. And so our providers work together as a team and collaborate to address the health needs of the entire patient. Not just, you know, a primary care provider alone or a dental provider alone, but these teams of providers can work together to talk about what the patient needs. So it's, it's really important. It will be a beautiful space for our patients to seek care and honestly, it will provide them with the dignity and respect that they deserve. So that's a bit about the health center. I'm happy to answer questions. We really hope that you'll come see it. It's a beautiful space.
I do have a question for you. Thanks, Julie. This is Commissioner Reed. I, you said that I think there were six behavioral health rooms. Can you break that down just a little bit more about the types of services or the types of professionals that, that will be there?
Sure. So we do share a psychiatrist with Burt Nash. So Dr. Nana Dodson is our chief of psychiatry and behavioral health. So she works with us and works with our other behavioral health providers. Rachel, I might need help on the numbers of, is it four behavioral health, four BHCs and then also psych APRN on our staff as well. And our model, we're actually getting ready to engage in a training for what's called the Cherokee Model. And this really is designed to help teams of primary care providers and, you know, dentists, anybody else that is providing care in the clinic be linked really closely with behavioral health. And the idea is, is that when we have patients that present for a primary care visit, it often is determined in the course of that visit that they may have other needs that a behavioral health specialist could step in and address. And so we have this model that is brief interventions. Sometimes that leads to the identification of a need for a more formal counseling or therapy or psychiatry services. And then we can help facilitate that to happen. But, but the, the model really is designed to be more brief interventions and sort of that integrated care, I think is, is really what we're, what we're doing there. Yeah, you're welcome. Anything else?
Yeah, Julie.
Yes.
You told us like what the new place has. Can you kind of give us more of a comparison of like what you had before to where you are now and how are, are any of the Panda providers moving into that space? What, how does that kind of, how does that transition work?
Sure. At this time Panda Pediatrics, the providers at Panda will stay in their current location, which literally is just blocks up the street. I think that it's likely that we may decide in the future that we want to have a pediatric provider, a pediatrician in the health center building. And so we've talked about that as a possibility at some point. But the space, as far as primary care, literally doubles our capacity. So, and also brings all services under one roof. So right now we have a dental operation at Main Street. All of our family practice providers are at Main Street. And then we also have a dental practice, the former Douglas County Dental Clinic staff, or staff and just the location on Yale Road. So we're, we're split up. And also if you have been in the Medical Arts Building and have, you know, seen it, it's, it's split up. It's really like the dental is sort of in its own wing and you have to walk through the building to get over to family practice providers. And so with the new facility, things are much easier and closer together. Just easier to navigate access for care teams to work together. Anything else?
Well, so you said a couple of things. So how, how many treatment rooms did you have before? Or is it just consolidation?
Right. So we had, I, I know that we were using a total of 17 treatment, treatment rooms at Main. So we've got 36 primary care exam rooms now in the new space. So literally doubling the amount of treatment rooms available for us to see patients.
So, but it's not doubling the number of providers. So it's the same number, it's just more space. When you say capacity, sometimes I think more providers.
Yes, we, we have room to grow and we fully expect that being in this new location will increase visibility for Heartland and we expect to see an increased number of patients seeking care at the health center. So we're, we are prepared when the data shows that, you know, we have the demand to hire another care team, we are ready to do so.
Commissioner Kelly, I have a question about Panda Pediatrics and I noted that it said one was a merger and one was an acquisition. And now I understand that Panda is not part of your new facility and you don't see having pediatric practices, what I just think I heard you just say. What's the benefit of acquiring Panda Pediatrics for Heartland?
Well, the benefit is, there are multiple benefits, but one of them, as I see it, is that we know that Panda Pediatrics had a large population in their practice of kids with Medicaid. And so we also know that if there are kids with Medicaid, there are probably parents without insurance. And Heartland can offer many wraparound services that enhance an individual's experience with healthcare. So we can facilitate parents who maybe are not, don't have a primary care provider into care at Heartland. We also have the same, like Julie just mentioned, we have a behavioral health specialist now embedded into Panda Pediatrics. Those are things that Panda wasn't able to do before. So that's one of the main benefits of the acquisition. Another benefit honestly of the acquisition was that with Heartland being a federally qualified health center, our reimbursement model with Medicaid, we get an enhanced reimbursement. So when a private practice physician sees a Medicaid patient, they're billing fee for service. So their reimbursement is, I, I don't even know what it is, but it's not much. It might be 30 bucks. Whereas when, when a federally qualified health center bills Medicaid, we are billing for an encounter rate. So it's, it's an increased encounter rate. So it's, it generates revenue. And, you know, we, if, we need to be really intentional about looking at our payer mix because we can use the revenue that we can generate when we see Medicaid patients to help us serve more uninsured patients without coverage. Does that help?
So I want to I'm going to say back what I think I understand from what you said. So the first two answers you gave were things that sounded like it helped Panda, right? One, that they have a lot of patients that come that would qualify for healthcare if they came to Heartland. Is that correct?
So they were seeing Medicaid patients, but what I'm saying is that the parents of these kids are, many of them uninsured and currently don't have a medical home. And so with Heartland coming in and merging or acquiring Panda Pediatrics, now suddenly all of the patients that were paid, formerly patients of Panda are now patients of Heartland. And we can help facilitate uninsured adults with kids that have Medicaid into care at Heartland.
Which speaks to your mission as an organization, right? Okay.
Absolutely.
And then the second thing I heard was that it balances that payer model when you can include Panda in there.
Right.
Which helps the overall bottom line. Is that, did I understand that? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Yeah, just to follow up on Commissioner Kelly's question, I, I think that sort of the follow-up on the bottom line, I think, I think a, a thing I'd like to see before next year's budget process is like, what does that mean in terms of dollars? So, you know, what does that do to Heartland's payer mix? What does that do to your revenue generation? How are those, how are those new dollars being used inside the center? And, and I think that'd be something I think the commission would like to see once you have some time under your belt at that point and you could provide that information.
Absolutely.
I overlooked one introduction. And I know it was because I'd asked one of our board members, Claire. It was a beautiful last name, but I needed to have her tell it to me phonetically. And then I missed it all together. So Claire, excuse me. That is Endera Ga Kura. And she's one of our board members also. I just want to kind of put an exclamation point behind Julie's presentation. This is somebody who took on everything inside that building, if you will, furnishings, art, flow, et cetera, as well as served for Heartland as the staff person in charge of the capital campaign. And it's amazing she's still standing because it was an incredible amount of work, including 515 mornings every week last week as, as the furniture arrived. So couldn't have done it without her. Just a, a couple more things, still recapping where we've been. That there were two significant changes in staff leadership, as you know. Robin Covington left in February of 2021 as CEO. Tiffany Lewis left in May as COO. And they are now, the board is now recruiting for a CEO. The, there was an agreement on the part of the board that they would get through the building, getting established on the capital campaign and then hit the ground running, which they are doing. They have now developed that preliminary look of qualifications that they think will bring a CEO who will have longevity, who will fit with the community, who will work with our partners and anticipate that that's going to be going fairly quickly and will keep you apprised as they go with that. One of the things we did when we, we came on was to take a look at the structure and see if we couldn't reduce some of the administrative costs. So we actually eliminated two chief positions. That was the chief of HR, became a director position and chief of administrative services. So right now what we have are an interim CEO, me, chief financial officer, a man named Scott. We have our chief operating officer, Rachel, stepped into that on a permanent basis about a month ago, but she'd been interim for four months and displayed her skills in that area. Chief of Development, which Julie currently fills. We have a Director of Human Resources now, not a chief. Health centers of this size probably don't need a chief level in that particular area. We have a chief of psychiatry who we share with Burt Nash, Dr. Nana Dodson. We have a chief of dentistry, which is Molly Day. And we have a chief medical officer, who is Dr. Waco Goodnight, one of our pediatricians. And that makes up our executive team. And I have to say that as somewhat unbiased person, it is an extremely strong team. We still are always learning, but this is a team that will carry this organization forward in a really significant way. And Sarah, I just was talking to our chief financial officer today and going over some of the finances. And we are at the very least breakeven, right at the moment, and anticipate that that will even improve by the end of our fiscal year, which is April. And what we are doing is using that funds again to reinvest into services. One of the things that all those operatories, rather all those exam rooms, give us the potential to look at because there may be funding for it, is providing vision services and hearing services. As you know, many plans do not cover that. Medicare does not cover that. And yet it's a real need in the community. So I anticipate looking at that and we certainly have the room to be able to do it.
Julie, I don't want to interrupt, but before we get too far along. Oh, I just, I don't want to interrupt, but before we move on to another topic, you were talking about the leadership team. This is Commissioner Portio. We know that federally qualified health centers tend to serve a disproportionate number of our communities of color. And I'm just wondering if you could tell us, since we've had some turnover in the leadership, is there kind of representation in the leadership team and what is the leadership team doing to make sure that there is a focus on serving people from communities of color and the most marginalized within our communities?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that it is always a challenge when an organization does a leadership change. And because it's confidential personnel information, there can be this vacuum. And people want the information, but we are bound by the confidentiality of it. I, I do want to say however, that when I spoke last to you, I admit to being caught off guard. We were having a grant hearing and four minutes before the end, I was asked about Robin Covington. And I think I, I, I know I made some off the cuff remarks and ones that were really ill-informed. I came in, did not have much information about what had preceded me. And I think that I, and I actually really regret having made those comments about Robin because they were not well-informed. I know what the responsibility of a CEO is. And I'll tell you, I never question when a CEO decides to look for other opportunities, which he is because it's challenging and sometimes you want to be able to move on. So I think again, I have, you know, I am sorry that I implied something happened that did not, and that was me being ill-informed and speaking off the cuff. And the truth is, I think that Robin chose to move on and we're working from there. One of the things I think that is always a challenge is getting a team together and you know, we're working on that right now. I think one of the good things about our current leadership team is that Rachel has been here for over nine years. Dr. Day has been here, I think, five years. Dr. Goodnight, although not in the position he's in now, has been an established pediatrician. Dr. Dodson has been here in the community for a while. So really just me as a CEO. Julie, although she is new to the, relatively new to the organization, has been in the community for several decades and running, I think for about 25 years, Douglas Dental. So well-established there. And I think what that means is we are going to be, they are going to be able to continue to gel, which I've seen them do, and move forward and really work on partnerships because we know that that has not always gone smoothly.
I'm going to follow up if it's okay with Commissioner Portio.
Yeah, my hearing aids died. So if you could speak up.
Sure, I'll do my best. I, I have a big voice. So I, I didn't quite hear you answer Commissioner Portio's question. So maybe I missed it. What practices are happening within your hiring process and assembling your leadership team or assembling your board that are helping to make sure that your leadership team at the organization or your, and/or your board is reflective of those who you are serving? That was a question, I didn't, did you, did you respond? Okay.
We are, well, first of all, I'll speak to our board. Because we are federally qualified health center, our board must be made up of 51% patients who use our services. And it used to be that health centers would have, honestly, their board committee get a flu shot once a year, declare them a patient. That doesn't work anymore. They really must have, within the past two years, used the services as their primary care provider. So, and our, our newest, our three newest board members, I'm just double checking on that in my head, are people of color. At the staff level, we definitely serve a significant number of people of color. The whole range of gender and sexual orientation differences. And I would not begin to pretend the, the executive committee, the executive team or the full staff yet represent that. Once you get probably past mid-level management, so getting the frontline staff, much more representative of the people we serve. We recognize that as a limitation. And I don't know if you've had the opportunity to meet with a woman named Crystal Bennett. She had been with the health department and now she's doing private consulting. An amazing African-American woman was dedicating herself to the issues of equity, inclusion, diversity. And we are now starting, as of this week, an 18-month journey that is going to include the executive team, the management team, frontline staff and the board to move us not to the point of competency, but to really be responsive and recognize our own biases and mitigate that in our organization. One of the challenges that I've raised with her is we are still a more white board. We are still a more white executive team. And how do we recruit people of color and other differences and not be seen as paternalistic? You know, and she said, that's a really good question and we're going to work on that. So we have dedicated money and time to saying, we're not there yet, but we intend to work really hard to get there.
So Julie, the only thing I'd add to that is I think some actual numbers of, well, I can talk louder. So I just think if, if in the next iteration, if we could get the numbers behind, like the demographics of your, of your, of your clients, also the demographics of your staff and then of your leadership, just those numbers, that would be really helpful. Yeah.
The first step that we're doing with Crystal is developing a baseline. And she's, she's not only looking to numbers for, I mean, numbers of how many staff are falling into those different categories, your board, your patients, but she's also going to be looking at our policies and procedures and our recruitment. And to the extent that we have the information available, and I'm not 100% sure we have all of it. But she would ideally like to take a look at, for this particular position, how many people applied? What percentage of those were people of color, for example? How many people were interviewed? And how many of those people were people of color? And how many did you hire? So she is really going to help us set exactly what you're talking about is not only where we are now, but some targets that we can is not only where we are now, but some targets that we can work to, short term and long term. So we'll be sure and have that. And I know Rachel has some information actually that she can provide with you about our patients. I'm just making sure. Oh, I guess I'll say one more thing since I got asked a question and answered your part, Devin. Oh, one of the joys of being a federally qualified health center is you are usually on a three-year grant. And every three years, you go into a competitive cycle, which anybody could apply to serve. In the middle of that, you undergo what's an operational site visit. I'm going to share that with you because it's important to understand there is a body that looks extremely critically at what we do. It is a three-day visit, usually onsite, this time, of course, it will be virtually, where they compare us, our documents, our responses to their interviews, any piece of paper they can get a hold of to the requirements that are put in a compliance manual. And so they are going to look at administration, they will look at governance, they will look at finances, and they will look at clinical quality of care. And in my other life, I'm a reviewer. And so I know what depth it goes to. And I always say, if you can pass that operational site visit, you have made a major strike because it is so deep diving into the details of how you run your organization and what kind of care you provide. It is also a baseline. And I think our organization really thinks compliance is the baseline. And ultimately, what we're heading for is to be high performing. And there are some characteristics of that that we will be aiming towards. We're there in some cases, we're not there in other cases. But I can tell you that after December eighth, ninth and 10th, I think, we will be able to come back to you and also share the results of that, which will, I think, give you an idea of where an outside entity sees us in terms of our sustainability and our, our, our services. Let me just check my notes.
Good afternoon. I'm Brad Koehler. K O E H L E R. I'm the current chair of the Board of Directors for Heartland. I was a board member for two years before I was elected this, the end of January, this calendar year to be the chair of the board. And I wanted to just sort of reiterate as to the importance of 51% of the board members having to be consumers of Heartland services. Because we are at some point on the front lines where we're receiving the care and the directives of all the policies that the board puts into place. So how they, how they're walked out to patients, what that looks like, what the expectations are, how it makes the patients feel. And to make sure that we're always giving the level of respect and dignity that every human being deserves is of utmost importance to us. And it's what we have at board meetings, the hard discussions about. And something that I encourage, let's have the really difficult, challenging discussions now. And if that means we don't come to a resolution or we don't find a workable solution to a situation, then we need to learn more. And that's how we have engaged and have proceeded since I've been on the board. And that's something that we carry through now. So what I wanted to speak briefly about to you here is this calendar year, there's been a couple of changes in staff leadership with Robin Covington leaving in, in February from her CEO position and with Mrs. Tiffany Lewis leaving in May as the COO, the chief operations officer. So the board now, as Julie spoke about, does have a CEO recruitment committee. And what we're doing now is having the executive staff members develop lists of leadership that they need to see in a person that is present every, every day and where we can go from there and build from there for potential candidates. So the timeline is within days of us needing to open a full search for the CEO position now that we're getting ready in a few days to open the new facility. So that will be our main focus. And in the meantime, as you know, Julie Boudin Schmidt has filled in as interim CEO and which you served in the same capacity in 2018 and 2019. And I just want to reiterate that she does bring 37 years of experience working with FQHCs. So she's been an incredible person to grace us with information and a lot of patience and a lot of education. So I will go ahead and turn it back over to Julie. Next, unless there's any questions about anything I've spoken about or from a board perspective, anything I can be of service with.
Brad, just a couple of questions about
Yes, please.
the CEO search. So can you tell me a little bit more about that, how long you think it'll take? Have you, are you involving any of our community partners in some sort of, you know, evaluation of the position, how this, how this, this is a key stakeholder in a variety of different community collaboratives? How are we going to ensure that this person is, knows all of those important linkages and partnerships as, as you're making that evaluation?
I'm glad that you asked that. And during our opening last night, I had several one-on-one conversations with community leaders that brought this very subject up. And what I can say that we're right now on the ground floor of putting together the outline that we need to move forward quickly with the CEO search. What we're doing is making sure that everybody that we partner with as Heartland and no matter what department or what level we're at and what level of service we're offering, we need to make sure that their voice is heard. Whether, whether pediatrics is their main concern, whether behavioral health is a main concern for their organization or whether it's just family medical practice, whatever they see the biggest need for. And so we're reaching out to community partners right now and having individual one-on-one conversations with them, either over Zoom or in person is sometimes better if everybody's comfortable with that. And we are building a list, a workable list, so that we can move forward with all those concerns in mind. So I think it's a bit too early to determine whether we need to, we need to open up the search. We just need to get a collective understanding of which direction we need to move in that's really the best for the community. Because at the base of all of this is how can we better serve the people that come to us for care? And the board loses sleep over people that feel like they have no other hope than to reach out at a time of need for their, for their children, for the elderly people for themselves. And certainly because of COVID, we're all as a community trying to heal. And we've been put in positions where the face of Heartland is, is changing right now. Those that look to us for care have never had to look for that. They've never had to ask for help. The people that we once served 10 years ago, when we opened as a care facility here in Lawrence is very different than today. We still have the care and concern for our initial patient population, but that has grown in ways that we had never imagined. That's why it's important for us to keep learning and to set up programs to make all of us wiser about the different patient populations that are now being presented to us for care. Before COVID, we had made arrangements with Dr. Danica Moore, who is now working with the school system to give us some equity training and insight and work through a program like that. And then within weeks of those negotiations, COVID happened. And so we had to wait and pause. And now she's working with the school system again. And, and we have been blessed with Crystal Bennett and, and working through a program that'll take us through two fiscal years. So I'm really excited about that. As we grow with our medical providers, it's very necessary that we remind everyone from the beginning in their, in their new positions and their new buildings that we are more knowledgeable about who is looking to ask for care. So that's something in our own lives, we can, we can certainly grow from. Was that a helpful answer for you?
Thank you.
My pleasure. All right. I'll invite Julie back up.
I'm going to ask Rachel to speak next and just give a little background. Her position before she became COO was Director of Strategy. And so I'm going to ask her to speak about the strategic plan that was passed in 2020 and then relooked at, given the mergers and the acquisitions this year. Also, maybe give just a little update on our partnerships because we know that those are critical to our success, as Brad was talking about in many ways. Robin, Robin, Rachel is one of those key people who has worked on those relationships. And maybe you could also talk a little bit about your operations team. Because I think what I'm hearing is, how are you actually running that organization and ensuring that it is running well? And Rachel is one of the key people for that.
Hey. I am, I'm glad we have the opportunity to continue the conversation. I know we met a couple of months ago. But since then, Heartland continues to evolve, continues to grow and settle into what I hope is a new season ahead of providing healthcare for our community. As Julie mentioned, we had a strategic plan set in place last year. Many of us know that last year was a very unpredictable. And so that strategic plan took some twists and turns over the last 12 months. And as a board and as an executive staff, we reviewed that over the last 60 days to do a bit of a relook. So essentially, the foundation of the strategic plan is set and it, you know, will focus on operational factors like revenue diversification, impact, quality of care, board culture. But in terms of operational, we're really honing in on the impact and what we, the, the quality of care that we're delivering to the community. So because of that, our operational team has expanded over the last 60 to 90 days. We've implemented what we recognize as the clinic manager model. And as has, as already been mentioned, our acquisitions and our mergers, we're really starting to frame our language and our conversation to be one organization, multi-site. It can be really easy to kind of get tripped up on, oh, PANDA, oh, family medicine, behavioral health, and really force this siloed approach. But we're really trying to drive language in because we know language matters. How we communicate about our culture, how we communicate about our peers and our partnership, that kind of sets that tone. So one organization, multi-site. So part of that operational strategy is to help define what that looks like and how it's implemented every day. So we have our direct reports of a COO, clinic managers, patient experience manager that really prioritizes the experience of a patient before they even cross the threshold of our doors. Then we have our dental team, which will also be expanded. And our Director of Compliance and Director of Quality and Operations that really focuses in on moving that work forward, quality measures, the data, the marks. To your question about the patient information, the demographics, we have a lot of that baseline because we report every year for UDS and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. So we have that direct report that is very just managerial. But then we have what we're calling our expanded ops team or our impact team. And this is a group of individuals that span across the organization that really work together for everyday work. So HR is represented in that space. Every service line is represented in that space, behavioral health, psychiatry, pediatrics, dental, family medicine, or preventative care. It's in that space that we really troubleshoot and strategize together. Really, that group is responsible influencing and implementing the infrastructure of Heartland. And then we have what we're identifying as our core. So the core of every service line, clinic manager, nurse lead, a patient service representative lead and the clinical lead. So the designated clinical guide, if you will, for that service line. Those individuals or that core focuses every day on rapid change, rapid remediation. Let's say that we are hearing an increase of patients having difficulty getting through our phone system. That happens. What are we doing in real time to review that and rapidly respond so that we are decreasing a barrier so that patients can access us in a timely manner? A lot of that, a lot of that structure and systems are, is being developed and it's underway. It's kind of, you, you've, we've all heard the example, you're building a plane when you're flying it, right? And so that's kind of where we've been over the last, this last summer, is modifying those systems. The teams heard me talk a lot about being very goal-driven. I think Heartland has been very goal-driven in the past. We are excited, we're energized, we're enthusiastic to reach a goal. When we get there, we celebrate. But then we look back and, and we think, okay, we need to evaluate the systems and the process and how we get there. So we're really trying to build that infrastructure. Our partnerships, again, the last year, if we want to point to COVID, if we want to point to the twists and turns of the organization, the partnerships are being restored. We're restoring confidence in our partnerships by actively engaging on a consistent basis and practicing clear communication. We have monthly strategy meetings with a few of our key partners like Bert Nash, like LMH Health. We've been working to facilitate conversations with DECA, with the county in terms of behavioral health, getting essentially back in the game, if you will. And so we're prioritizing that because we recognize we have to restore the confidence in those partnerships and those relations. But also we have to restore the confidence in the culture at Heartland because of the transitions that have happened. And we know anytime we start to display or manage change, try to restore in culture, that's going to take some time. And so we have been looking strategically at some investments and what that looks like. Maybe it's some very specific training. It's a very intentional relook of every policy and procedure under our roof that spans the service lines so that we have the data that informs our decision-making processes. But I also want to make a note, I know Commissioner Kelly, you're very involved in Kansas Leadership Center. And, you know, Heartland's been involved in the past, too. We're excited that we were awarded this week a grant that allows us to dedicate 30 slots for our employees to be a part of that leadership training. Because we really want to restore back that leadership is that activity and it's not dependent on that position to really strengthen that throughout the organization. And so I would also say too, that with the partnerships, we've been able to get back to thinking creatively about what does it look like to meet the needs of the patients? Because it does look different today. It does look different and it will continue to evolve and continue to change as people settle into what we might recognize as the new normal. But the, the truth is, the dedication and the commitment to the mission of Heartland remains strong and it remains steady. And so I believe that we're at a place now where, where the momentum of this move and the momentum of the changes that have happened is going to propel us into that next season of delivering the high-quality care that the community deserves. And when I think of one of the reasons why we're here today, it's because of the purpose that we all share to ensure that our neighbors and our community members have access to high-quality care regardless, regardless of their income, regardless of their background, regardless of their insurance status, that people have a right to access healthcare. And so in review, and just refreshing the budget request, I wanted to just share a couple of notes that this funny request that we're here for today is the request to the county represents the product of merging with healthcare access, acquiring Douglas County Dental. And it really goes to support providing care for our uninsured neighbors. Specifically, it covers the cost of one care team at Heartland. And just to kind of provide a snapshot, one care team at Heartland typically includes one provider, that may be an MD or an APRN, two nurses, maybe that's an RN, an LPN, an RN and an MA, and then that behavioral health linkage. So for this request, we, we just want to remind ourselves and implore the commission to know that if we lose this money or if this money is compromised, it will have a direct impact to patient care. Approximately 1,200 patients Approximately 1,200 patients would feel the effect if a care team was cut. Yes, we're moving into a new building. Yes, we acquired Pana Pediatrics and we're working to diversify our revenue, but the reality is these local dollars make a direct impact to the healthcare system of Douglas County and we hope that we can preserve that. We hope that as we move forward, we're restoring the confidence in this space and restoring the relationship here so that we can keep moving forward. And I had a couple of notes that a typical panel of patients for a provider, about 30% of patients are racially or ethnic, isn't racial or ethnic minority. So that kind of gives an indicator that, and we capture this information in our needs assessment, so we can pull that very specific data to provide if we need a supplement or follow-up on this specific request so that we fully do demonstrate where patients are, what zip codes, and what districts, and, and the minority information that we may have too. And we also, in this ask, we request dollars dedicated to dental. As we merged with Douglas County Dental last year, we assume the responsibility of thousands of patients that are seeking dental care. Dental is every bit a part of our operation as family medicine or behavioral health or psychiatry. And so we really want to preserve the access to dental care for our families, for the adults in our community. And again, what sets us up, I think, for true success as one organization, multi-site is, and as we've said before with our partners in the community, we hope that there is, we are creating a, a space or a pathway that there is not a wrong entry point for healthcare in our community, that if someone shows up in any space at Heartland, we are a pathway or gateway to get the patient, what they need, when they need it, maybe even before they actually need it or in crisis. So I'm happy to answer any specific questions if anyone has, but I hope that demonstrates or even at a high level, kind of what's happening.
Thank you for that overview. This is Commissioner Portio. So I appreciate that you are building a number of administrative systems kind of as you're going. And in particular with the merger and the acquisition, it seems like there's probably a lot of administrative infrastructure that you're having to establish and reestablish. One of the things that we've seen over the course of the pandemic and well before that is that there are barriers built into our healthcare system that have racialized outcomes that are very much policy and practice driven, not just the representation of leadership, but policies and practices. Can you give us an example of how you're really consciously approaching that as you're building this new administrative infrastructure?
I don't want to oversimplify because that is a, it's an important question. One thing that comes to my mind, one activity, is our participation in the equity clinics and the community. That as, as the pandemic began to really emerge, there was a commitment by our leadership to respond, to take the care needed or the vaccines or the testing needed to the community. And that was set up by individuals that are very passionate and also very committed to seeing this through. And I'm very thankful that we're going to continue participating in that, in those equity clinics. We have since launched a more robust mobile outreach for our communities. So dental, we have a community-based program through our dental service line that takes dental services out into the community, specifically schools. Because that model has worked so well, we've been able to adopt that and modify it slightly so that we can deliver vaccines. And so we have mobile outreaches to deliver vaccines to perhaps individuals that may have transportation barriers, may work and not be able to get to a provider in the normal hours of eight to five or nine to five. So we are, we're recognizing that we can't just wait for people to come to us. We have to modify, modify the, the procedures to take the services to the community. And I, I predict that we're going to see more of that. I predict that we're going to have the opportunity to talk about school-based healthcare, to talk about creative ways to partner with organizations like Just Food or, you know, any of our behavioral health partners to continue to take services out to where people may, you know, again, goes back to this idea of one organization, multi-site, being able to spread our resources out to those locations. But that's just something that comes to my mind. If that answers.
So as a federally qualified healthcare facility, anything that says federal in front of it usually means regulations, right? And I think during the initial vaccine rollout, we heard some disagreements about what those federal regulations were when it came to rolling out vaccines. Can you walk us through sort of like what's your process when someone raises a concern, whether internally or externally, about how we're applying those federal regulations within the healthcare system?
Sure, I'll do my best. And if I can't answer the question, we'll get it to you. And I'm also going to answer as an administrator, not a clinical provider, because there's a difference. So from our, from an administrative standpoint, we have a commitment to provide a resource to patients or the community at, when it's needed, right? So there's a commitment to deploy vaccines, boosters is the latest topic, but to make that resource available to the community. We have a team, a clinical team that, and a quality committee that monitors these types of updates. We have recently appointed a clinical safety officer who really, and Director of Compliance, who is committed to monitoring those mandates and those updates. And they, they changed swiftly. Just in the last week, we were receiving updates. We're informed by our National Association, we're informed by our Primary Care Association in Topeka. So while Heartland, we, our commitment is to deliver, but our commitment is also to stay informed and to be nimble or just if needed. And so again, I don't want to misspeak here, but I, I would be happy to follow up with more specifics if, if it requires, you know, if you want to see our policies. We do, recently, we made the commitment, man, probably about 60 days ago, that our staff will be vaccinated as well. And so we've navigated that through the guidance. And I'm very thankful to say that I think we're at like 99% of our employees made the commitment to be vaccinated as well. So, but I, I would like to follow up on that because I, I don't want to misspeak. That's okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll follow up with you for some more specifics.
It's a, it's been a, it's been an ongoing and evolving conversation, one in which I'm typically in tandem with our CMO on, because that's generally where the questions come from, is clinical guidance and how that impacts the mandate. So I, I want to be sure that I answer clearly for you.
I guess to follow up on that though, so if, if Heartland is looking to do mobile outreach for boosters and vaccination, my assumption is, I, I've missed a couple of the latest Unified Command Vaccination subgroup meetings, but that you would, Heartland would be represented on that team and be working in coordination with Unified Command on that outreach? Who's your representative?
We have a nurse who is our clinic manager for family medicine. She is a, she's a point of contact. Our pharmacist in charge or Director of Pharmacy is also a point of contact. And I am the administrative point of contact. And so our, our interim CEO has been representing Heartland kind of at that higher level until the structure has been set. But just as frequently as, or recently as Monday, we had a conversation with the Health Department and the hospital to reinstate that so that we have three, three people that are represented on those calls. And I can give you specifically the names if needed and emails.
No, it wasn't quite clear from how you worded it, if you were just, you were waiting for them to contact you or if you're going to start attending.
No, we've been, yeah, there's been the conversations and, and like I said, this week with the, yes, we, we have been participating in those.
Hi, this is Commissioner Reed. I wanted to ask a question that is patient-centered, patient-driven. And, you know, full disclosure, it's based on feedback from folks in the community that I know in various ways. I'm wondering if you can speak to how the organization is looking at things like questions on forums around names, biological sex and gender identity, pronouns. Can you speak to me about the conversations that have been had and what maybe policies have changed or being looked at?
Yeah, so as a community health center, we aim to prioritize the accessibility for all and create a safe zone for individuals that come into our practice. I think I know specifically where some of these grievances may be coming from, but the issue is we have our quality committee team that reviews forms and policies and procedures that impact patient care. We also have a team that reviews the patient grievances or incidents. We have also received some feedback about the use of a preferred name versus a dead name. And so there has been added, let me rephrase that, there has been attention to added training over the last 60 days to remind our staff, the processes and the workflows to honor what is put on a piece of paper. And so we do have that commitment. There, there is policies and procedures in place and what we have the opportunity for as we move into this new location is to reinstate a lot of those practices that have already been there, but that have required new training because of staff transition. And so I, I know Dr. Molly Day is in the room too. She serves on our quality committee and represents a clinical arm of the health center. And I can assure you that this is a conversation that we have weekly and we are constantly finding ways to improve so that people do feel welcomed, that they feel safe, that they feel heard, that they feel validated, because that's, well, it's part of our mission. And so the best I can say today is that we have a dedicated group of people that span the organization that includes quality compliance, our CMO, Chief Dental Officer, myself, and CEO. And those reports go to the board for review and for engagement as well and accountability.
Thanks, I appreciate knowing that there's a grievance procedure and that there is a real process for reviewing and, and responding to those. Can you, I just wanted to like drill down on a couple of details and I want to be clear that I'm, so I'm a service provider in the community also. I'm an advocate who has worked with people that utilize your services over the years. And it is an issue that has come up a number of times over the years across the practice, across the different providers. And so.
Specifically at Heartland?
Yes. And so I, I just, it's important to me to highlight it because I think that, I appreciate that there's a commitment to continuously training and ensuring that staff is respecting those policies. And it sounds like the forums ask folks, you know, I understand there's a need for, for legal names and names that match documents like health insurance and such, and that the name that people go by is important to honor. So I also want to be clear that the, I'm curious if there is on the form a differentiation between asking what somebody's biological sex is and asking what somebody's gender identity and pronouns are.
Yes.
And then this is just a, I guess, a bit of an unsolicited tip that I'll throw out, things like just removing the use of gendered language like ma'am and sir and mister and misses and really honing in on knowing somebody's name, first name that they go by can go a long way. And so I just want to mention that that is feedback that I have heard over time and I appreciate that there's a dedicated, that there's continuous conversation because that goes a very long way towards dignity.
I appreciate that and the continuing conversation and the prioritization. It's a priority. And for a patient or a community member that may be interested in looking at our forums, they are available online. We have a new website slated for this weekend, launching this weekend, that will have our updated, our most updated information. But to answer your question, those specific questions or the forums are designed to be inclusive.
I guess I would follow up that no action can be taken at this meeting in terms of the actual budget request. Work sessions are for informational purposes and educational purposes only. So at a future county commission meeting, we could place it on our agenda for consideration in terms of moving forward, in terms of the allocation. I do want to point out, and I did check and I did not, that just for the commission's benefit, we placed $227,003 in the commissioner's budget for further review. So we can, we can just look to Heartland and figure out when it's a good time to put it back on the agenda.
I just wanted to add on the sheet of paper you've got. We came up with a suggested approach to improve communication. It's one of the things we've talked about with both Sarah and Bob is that it has not been perfect. And so we offer that to you and we'll work with Sarah to make sure that we do something that works for you, to make sure that communication stays up to date. The last, I just want to say in regard to the question you had, one of the advantages of having a 51% consumer, a patient board is they're in the community and they do hear those issues. And just within the past short time, I've had two board members come directly to me with this issue that you're talking about. And so we, you know, they know they can be a voice for that and they know where they need to be heard at the same time, understanding we need to make sure we have the information so we can actually do something about it. But we get the information from a variety of ways and we don't ignore it. I think the challenge is at our service level, people turn over fairly frequently. That's true in almost any health center. And so you just have people trained and you've got them being really cognizant of how they should approach different people and then we get somebody new. It's not an excuse. We know we need to work on that.
So I want to thank everybody from Heartland coming today and sharing with us and, and your willingness to be reflective about your past practices and how we can improve the partnership. You know, the three items that you listed in our enclosure is helpful in a, in a way. Our responsibility is, this is almost a little over a quarter of a million dollars. And so I think we really have an expectation to those who have put their trust in us to make sure how we allocate those dollars to organizations, that those organizations are, are being good partners. And I think that was really our hope, was my hope today. I don't want to speak for the other commissioners. And, and so I appreciate these three items that you gave here of a better way to connect and, and make sure that as, as you all make decisions, you're, you're recognizing the investment. You talked a lot about how we engage partners. You're recognizing the investment that, that the people of Douglas County have made and, and that we are tasked and Sarah and her team are tasked with ensuring that, that as changes happen or crises come up or personnel issues come up, that we're informed of that. So thank you for addressing that.
Thank you for coming this afternoon. We appreciate it and we will recess until our business meeting at 5:30.